Chris.
Yes, sir.
How much time do, again, how much time do you give those individuals to respond?
Well, they can respond up until the meeting. We generally send the notices out about.
Two weeks or more. I send them with the replat ones.
Yeah, we generally put them in the mail about fifteen days ahead of time. So by the time they get them, they usually have at least a week to respond.
And I did check with the mail before we came here, but sometimes it does come during the meetings.
You guys want to go ahead and get started and get rid of Mr. Rowe in here? So he can get to his business. Any offices? Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Beaumont, September twenty first Planning Commission. Would you call the roll, please?
Chairman Najad.
Here.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Javid.
Here.
Commissioner Little is absent. Commissioner Maiken.
Here.
Commissioner Noyola.
Here.
Commissioner Karishi.
Here.
Commissioner Sinigor.
Here.
And Commissioner Steinhagen is absent.
Okay, great. You have received the minutes of the meeting. Is there any revisions or suggestions on the minutes? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to approve and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Mr. Boone, we have replat of Garden Villas.
Yes, sir.
Why don't we do both of them together, if you don't mind? Can we do that? No reason he stands up twice.
Okay. The first item is a replat of Garden Villas Block Three. Tom Rowe with Mark Whitley and Associates has requested approval of a replat of Lot twenty six and track three of tracks one through three into lots twenty six A and twenty six B, Block Three, Garden Villas, Jefferson County, Texas. The intention of this plaid is to transfer ownership of approximately one half acre from one lot to the other. Water is provided by Meeker Municipal Water District and septic is on site. And shown before you is the outline of the property. Again, you can see the dash line at the top of that screen. That's the existing lot line. The one running east-west is the proposed. We have sent notices out to nineteen property owners. We've received zero responses in favor and zero responses in opposition. Staff is recommending approval of this application. Are there any questions of staff?
Any questions? Mr. Rowe? Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. Tom Rowe, Mark Whitley and Associates, thirty-two fifty East Tex Freeway. As Chris explained, the owners of Lot twenty six, an older couple, wishes to sell the rear portion of their property to an adjoining neighbor. It's a pretty simple, straightforward little transaction. If it, any questions?
Any questions, folks?
Thank you, sir.
And this would require a public comment?
Yes, sir.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? How do we handle this? Are those guys gonna, no?
If you can check with the dean just to make sure there's not anyone there.
Or maybe you can, okay, yeah.
Or I can call her. So no one's here to speak on the first item, Garden Villas Block Three.
Great, okay. So we close the public hearing. Any questions or comments? I would ask him for a motion.
Motion to approve replat Garden Villa Block Three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Okay. The second and final item on the regular meeting's agenda is a replat of Pecan Grove Edition Block Two. Tom Rowe of Mark Whitley and Associates has requested approval of a replat of the south thirty-seven point seven five feet of Lot Seven. All of Lot Eight in the north, forty-one and a half feet of Lot Nine into a proposed Lot Seven A and Eight A Block Two, Pecan Grove Edition, Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. The purpose of the replat is to divide a large vacant property and over two and a half lots into two buildable lots. All utilities are available to this site. I don't, you see before you is, you can see the hashed lot lines or the existing lot lines and the bold lines there are the proposed lots. We have sent out twenty-five notices to property owners. We've received zero in favor and zero in opposition. Staff is recommending approval of this re-subdivision. Any questions of staff?
So these were about thirty-two feet apiece?
Yes, sir. Very narrow.
You can't build much on that, can you?
Not, it's difficult, very difficult.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon again.
Good afternoon. Yes, the two couples have purchased this property and they each wish to build a home and so that's the purpose of this. It takes something that was sold and has been sold several times as multiple lots to be divided into buildable, as Chris said, buildable lots.
But both of them are proposed to be residential, correct?
Yes, sir.
No other structures?
Sir?
No, nothing else other than homes?
Just homes, as far as we know. Yes, sir.
One on each lot?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Rowe? Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? I believe you, you, you folks wanting to speak? Nope? You had some concerns before?
Yeah, we've been here.
All right, and is that resolved now?
Yeah, we found out.
Perfect. I just want to make sure you guys are happy. Thank you very much. Okay, so this closes the public hearing. I would entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, thank you very much. Mr. Rowe, have a great day.
Thank you, sir.
I guess those guys were afraid this might be something else other than a house.
Yeah, it's all, it's all zone single family.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, exactly.
Good, yes, good news. I can't believe we had to go into the fridge.
Yeah.
Well, what comes next? You're really good.
Yeah.
There's your, there's your number, I'll be coming to you.
Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. By popular demand, we're back. Planning and zoning commission and the city council meeting. My name is Sina Najad and I welcome you to our September twenty first meeting. Madam Mayor, you would give us a start.
May we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Ames.
Here.
Mayor Protim Belcha.
Present.
Councilmember Pete.
Here.
Councilmember Neil.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel, absent. Councilmember Muton, absent.
Thank you. So I know we have a room full of people. Will they see me from here?
They will, it's being checked.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the joint public hearing of the city council and the planning commission. The reason we are here today with two forums is because we are going to listen to each case before us. Please know that today is the day that if you're here to speak in favor or against any of the items before us, this is the time to do it at our, at our joint public hearing. The planning commission today will give a recommendation to the city council when they vote. It'll come up before council in about two weeks and then the final vote be, will be given by council. However, when it's heard by council, it will not have, you will not have the opportunity to speak. That's why we're having this joint public hearing today. So thank you all for coming and we appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Boone, let's get started with twenty-four eighteen P, please.
Good afternoon. File twenty-four eighteen P is to consider a request for an amended specific use permit to allow retail and condominiums in a G C M D two, General Commercial Multifamily Dwelling Two District at forty-five fifteen North Major Drive. Mr. Lee is requesting an amended specific use permit to allow retail and condominiums at this location. The proposed development would consist of seventeen condominiums and approximately twenty-three thousand square feet of retail space. In December of twenty nineteen, a request for retail and storage was approved at this site. The proposed site plan has been updated to include the condominiums as mentioned, as opposed to the mini storage. And let me go ahead and show you the properties outlined there in red. This aerial has not been updated, so there's actually an apartment complex that I'll show you on the photographs here in a second. It's actually on the northern boundary of the property, but that's the property in question. This is an aerial view of the property. And this is the property with the site plan overlaid. Again, at that scale, it's a little hard to see, but you can see the, you can see the site plan with the retail in the front along with the parking. And then instead of the mini storage as approved back in nineteen, you see the condominiums. And then you see the access drive on the north side that should be separate from the condom, basically separating the drive traffic pattern of the condos from the, from the retail so that the residents don't have to cut through the, through the shopping center each time. I will point out on this site plan, it's not a condition, but I'll point it out since I believe the applicant is here. This is on Major Drive, so I believe Tech dot will be looking at the driveways. And I just wanted to point out that there are two driveways that are in fairly close proximity. So we would ask, of course, that they review that driveway layout with Tech dot. This is the subject property, again undeveloped, but you can see the, the new apartments there on the right side of the screen. These are the apartments in question. This is a view across Major to the east, view to the southeast. This is also east across Major. And that is all I have for my slides. Let's see. We did send out nine notices to area property owners. We've received zero in favor and zero in opposition. But based on the application, staff is recommending approval of the amended specific use permit. And with that, are there any questions of staff?
Has the fire marshal reviewed this?
It has been distributed to the fire marshal, yes, sir.
And they agree with one means of egress with the condominium?
Well, they submitted no objections, so.
Trying to figure out where the fire truck's gonna turn, between the buildings, I guess?
Correct.
And the condominiums have their own parking?
It looks like they, they will have their own parking, yes, sir.
Okay, great. And the applicant is in the audience?
Yes.
Okay, good. Any questions for Chris? Mrs. Sujari, good afternoon. If you would state your name and address for the record, please.
Charles Sujari, eighty-seven Interstate ten, North Suite one-one-five, Beaumont, Texas.
Great. Do you have any additional information that you would like to give us?
Not really, not at this time, but our client decided to not do the climate control storage in the back, just move forward with the condominium.
All right. So my question, the same as what I asked Chris, what about the fire truck entrance and exit?
We had a pre-development meeting previously with the storage climate control and it was approved at that time. We will set up the meeting with the fire marshal to discuss the options. And the driveway issues, we can also result that put one main driveway and make a turnaround left or right for access.
Yeah, because the condominiums require different criterias for firefighting than the storage, I believe.
And since we have a lot of room in the back, we can make a turnaround.
Good. Okay, perfect. Any questions for the gentleman? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? I'm not sure who I'm asking this, but anybody in the back or not? Nope? Perfect, great. We close the public hearing. We've heard from the staff and also the applicant. And if there are no questions, I entertain a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Boone, twenty-four twenty P.
Yes, twenty-four twenty P is to consider a request for a specific use permit to allow a short-term foster home facility in an R C R H, Residential Conservation Revitalization Historic District at twenty-four oh-six Broadway. Harvest House Ministry has requested a specific use permit for the property located at this address. The applicant would like to use the property as a temporary foster home. This property, you may be familiar, was formerly the Jason's Deli corporate office. They had several of the, of the homes there converted to corporate offices over the years and have since vacated the premises. Regarding this, the, the children would reside at the property until a more permanent situation can be provided for them. As such, the property would be more residential in nature than the prior use. Let me go ahead and walk you through the slides. This is the location. An aerial view, and this is the proposed site plan showing the two structures there with the parking in the rear. Nothing's really proposed to be changed on the site plan. However, with the conversion to residential, they will be required to go through permit review for building code and fire. This is a view of the subject property. Also the second structure. Also, the second, uh, structure. This is a view to the north, actually the antique store facing Calder, uh, behind this property. A view to the east, uh, the southeast. Uh, view to the south. Also to the south across the street. And a view to the west. Uh, we did mail twenty-three notices to adjacent property owners. Uh, we received zero responses in favor and zero in opposition. Um, based on the application, uh, staff is recommending approval of this application. With that, are there any questions of staff? And if not, I believe the applicant is in the audience. Yes?
Chris, I've got a question.
Yes.
The staff report says children would reside, but the paperwork from Harvest House says women are girls. Is it?
They're saying under eighteen, so.
Okay, so is it just girls?
Yes, so not males. Um,
Okay.
They've made it clear, no mental health, no detox. They're really just, uh, they're really focusing on females, eighteen, and, and younger.
Okay.
Do we have, do you get parking, parking for this?
We believe so, yes. Uh, over the years, Jason's Deli had added parking to those facilities, and we believe there is adequate parking. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Boone.
Thank you.
And is the applicant in the audience? Good afternoon, ma'am. How are you today?
I'm good. How are you?
Great. If you would state your name and address for the record, and give us any additional information you might have.
Uh, my name is Lisa Bowler, and the address that we're talking about is twenty four oh six Broadway.
And what is your address, ma'am? Your company or wherever you receive mail?
Harvest House is, we have a P O box. It's P O box one two eight one three.
And?
Beaumont, Texas, seven 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 zero six.
Perfect. So, uh, give us more information about what you're doing.
Okay. Well, first of all,
You have three minutes, and if you run over, you can ask, and we would be happy to give you some extension.
Okay, okay, great. Uh, first of all, let me thank you, uh, for allowing me to come before you today, and, um, I don't know if you know this, but we do have a problem in Texas, and it's a trafficking problem. Uh, Texas ranks second in the nation for this horrific crime, and Houston and Beaumont are among the top five cities where children are victimized. We want to open a home to provide a safe, supportive, and normalizing environment for girls under eighteen who are survivors. We will provide an atmosphere of acceptance where the girls would need short-term housing, and they can grow in self-worth, dignity, and self-respect. This home would be, would help southeast Texas to become a part of the solution to this. Um, the services that will be provided are education services, getting G E D support. We'd help them provide, um, G, G E D options for online and G E D classes. Um, they would have access to medical care, health and wellness education. Clients would have access to clinical professionals who could help them make an informed decision about their health, and who would perform education to provide them to take responsibility for their ongoing wellness. Life skills and mentorship. Uh, mentors establish a trusting relationship with clients, helping them to reach their potential through healthy friendship and unconditional love. Um, we would help them with job search support. Clients can learn how to write a resume, cover letters, learn how to interview and evaluate job offers. We would also provide them with guidance on professional dress and clothing for interviews. Um, we would supply coordinated advocacy. The existing advocacy program encourages the client empowerment and self-sufficiency. Advocates provide emotional support, help clients to understand the various processes and organizations that they must navigate, um, and ensure their voice is heard throughout all of this process. Uh, direct supervision and security. Clients may receive housing up to ninety days during which we would have highly trained staff monitoring clients twenty-four seven. The capacity of the home is ten clients, and we would meet the state minimum standards by providing a four-to-one client to caregiver ratio. Our property is also surrounded by an eight-foot iron fence, and we would have a security system with cameras and alarms. Drug testing, we would require an off-site professional drug testing for the girls. Uh, food and clothing, all clothing and food would be provided, and all personal hygiene items. Case management, advocates provide case management through comprehensive client care assessments.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Yes.
You're three minutes out. I'll make a motion to, uh, allow the lady to continue.
Yes, second.
Thank you.
Continue, please.
Um, so case management, advocates provide case management throughout comprehensive client care, assessments, and by linking clients to services within the community. We already provide advocacy services for southeast Texas, um, especially right now in Jefferson County. We work with the DA's office, the Beaumont Police Department, with Garth House, and with, um, the hospitals and different things like that. Um, they would also have access to individual counseling. Clients would have a licensed professional, L P C. And that will conclude today, and, um, again, thank you so much.
And, uh, you're, this is a nonprofit organization, correct?
Correct.
How do you receive your funding?
We receive our funding through personal donations from people in our community. Um, just this last year, we got one grant, a federal grant, that would help pay our advocacy, um, three salaries for our advocates. So, it's our first attempt to get that, and so we do plan on doing that in the future to provide just the advocacy salaries.
Well, this is an extremely well worth effort that you're doing. I'll, I'll commend you for that. I'm, I'm really sorry to hear that we do have that kind of problem in the two thousand and twenty in Beaumont and in Houston especially, so. Before you leave, you take the email and the phone number of everybody in the room. I'm sure they would be happy to have, help you with that.
That's great news.
Questions from the lady?
I have a question. The girls who will be attending, are they local? Are they from our area? Or will they be coming from other areas?
Both, because some of the clients that we'll serve do not need to be local just because of a certain reason or a risk factor, so those girls, we work with other agencies all across Texas, and we can place, which we already have placed girls in other towns because it was just the best decision for them. And so sometimes that will be vice versa. Um, the governor's office has set up a plan to where there's seventeen advocacy centers already existing in the state of Texas, and we work with all seventeen and collaborate together because of how the movement goes with trafficking.
Thank you.
Sure.
Go ahead, please.
Uh, you stated after, you stated that they would stay for ninety days.
Up to ninety days.
And then after ninety days, what happened?
So, the reason why we're thinking short-term is because when we get a client in, normally, to be able to find long-term placement, it takes more than thirty days. And with the, the paper process, making sure that there's a bed available to them, we only want to provide the short-term. Where we are in Beaumont, I think that a long-term facility, um, may be in the future, but right now, this is what we're looking at.
So, you pass them on to some other agencies, or what happened?
Correct. A long-term facility is a place where they can go for up to twelve to fifteen months, and they receive services in that long-term facility. Um, one of the issues that we have had already is that where do we put them right now? They're recovered, but there's nowhere to put them right now until we can get them into that, that other long-term place.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Good afternoon, sir.
How are you, sir?
Doing great, thank you.
Lisa asked me to come. I'm a board member with Harvest House, but I've been in law enforcement, uh, here in Jefferson County for over twenty years.
If you would state your name and address for the record, and we'd love to hear from you.
Marcelo Malfino, one 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 five zero Cold Drive, Beaumont, Texas, seven 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 oh five.
Alright, sir. Go ahead.
Um, right now, Harvest House is the only place that, uh, can I pull this down? Is that alright?
Yeah.
Harvest House is the only place right now that when we recover, when I say we, law enforcement or the public recovers a juvenile female, they immediately go, respond, and that child immediately has an advocate. So, we have law enforcement, we have the court system and all that, but what you don't realize is, these girls are trained by their pimps and by the street to act a certain way, and these ladies back here are really the only people locally who know how to deal with that. We had a murder case happen in Needeland a couple of years ago that turned out to be a huge trafficking case. And right here from Beaumont, Texas, you had fourteen, fifteen, sixteen-year-old girls being trafficked from as far as, from, from Beaumont to Colorado, Florida, and it all started from right here. The pimps were from here, the victims were from here, and they were taken all over. And what Lisa and the ladies do there is, you can't put a mu, a price tag on it. Uh, the torturers has believed in them enough to donate their properties to them, and I think we need to, to follow suit.
How did you get involved in this?
Um, working that big trafficking case. I'm also on the board for some other juvenile nonprofits, and, uh, met with Lisa actually when she first went to a couple of school board meetings, what, five or so years ago? So, this has been a passion of hers that she has put time, effort, and money to, and the public has finally realized the need. Uh, you travel up and down this I-ten corridor, and you go to these hotels, unfortunately, that's, that's where these girls are being placed. And the education that Lisa and Harvest House can put forth to talk to these hotel workers, to talk to these maids, to say, if this doesn't look right, call. Law enforcement is joining aboard, the community is joining aboard, and together we can at least make it to where Beaumont, Texas is not gonna be a house and a haven for trafficking.
Well, thank you, sir. Thank you for your, hold on a minute. The councilman's got a question for you.
Well, tell them what you do.
I'm an investigator at the district attorney's office. Um, I basically, uh, handle all your major crimes, your robbery, your homicides. We have this homicide and trafficking case that, um, we traveled nine hundred and thirty miles in one day to recover a girl and bring her back to Beaumont with some of the guys from DPS, and that case was from right here in Beaumont.
Alright, thank you very much, sir. Thank you for what you're doing. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? We've closed the public hearing. We heard from the, uh, applicant and also the, uh, the staff. Very well worthwhile case, and, uh, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we definitely approve twenty four twenty dash.
I second it.
Uh, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, s, raise your hand, please. Any in opposition? The ayes have it. Thank you. Congratulations. Good luck to you folks. Please come back if we can help you with anything. Have a great day. Twenty four twenty one Z. That kind of breaks your heart, doesn't it?
Okay. Twenty four twenty one Z is to consider a request to rezone a property from R S, residential single-family to R M M, residential multifamily dwelling medium-density district. Uh, Helbig Community Development Corporation has requested a rezoning for this property located at the northwest corner of Maida Road and Betsy Lane. A tentative site plan provided by the applicant, uh, which is in your staff report, indicates they wish to construct a multifamily development at this location. Uh, water and sewer lines are available at this location. Uh, however, the developer's engineer will need to determine if adequate capacity exists for the proposed development. Uh, let me go ahead and show you some slides. This is the, um, property in question outlined in red. This is also that property. You can see it's located on Maida Road, uh, off of Helbig. Um, and obviously, there's a lot of R S, single-family zoning property in the area, but if you look just to the west at Barrett and Maida, you'll see, uh, some blocks of R M M, which again is what they're requesting here. I'll also point out that, um, that Maida Road is shown as an arterial on the, uh, comprehensive plans, major street plan. Um, in addition, this area is shown as a neighborhood growth unit, um, in the comprehensive plan, uh, which for, which allows for and encourages a variety of residential density, um, along arterial streets. Let me go ahead and show some more slides. This is a view of the subject property. Again, it's undeveloped wooded property. A view to the east. Uh, this is a view to the southeast. This is a view to the south, um, and there are several single-family, uh, homes along the stretch of Maida. This is a view to the south. And we did send out thirty-two notices to surrounding property owners. We did receive, um, four responses in opposition, uh, and zero in favor. And I believe Adina is checking, do we have any opposition here? Okay, no one is here from opposition, but let me go ahead and try to summarize the opposition that was shared to us in writing. Uh, one was from Mary Ann Artists at thirty-six thirty-five Maida, and she, um, simply says that she's opposed to the rezoning. Also, uh, Mary Ann Artists at thirty-six thirty-five Maida, she owns a separate property, so again, she gets a, she gets a separate notice and is in opposition. Then I also have a, um, a Simon and Verge Caesar, um, at sixty-three fifty Barrett, and they simply state they're opposed, and then an Anthony J Caesar at thirty-seven fifty-five Maida saying they are opposed. However, um, again, based on the proposed use and based on the fact that this is on a proposed arterial and is, uh, in a neighborhood growth unit, uh, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning application. But with that, are there any questions of staff?
How big is the lot?
Uh, approximately seven acre, seven and a half acres.
Thank you.
Um, so again, it's a rezoning request, so we don't know exactly, but based on the preliminary plan they've given us, they're proposing one hundred. Uh, based on the zoning density ratio, I think they would be allowed to have a hundred and fifteen, so that would be within the, would be within the density ratio outlined in the ordinance. Any other questions? If not, thank you. I do, I believe the applicant is in the audience.
Okay, great. And the applicant? Good afternoon, sir. If you would state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Aaron Reynolds Junior. I live at sixty-nine forty-five Salida, here in the city of Beaumont.
Thank you, sir.
If I am allowed, I have a.
Please do. Alright, sir, go ahead, please.
Um, I have been in the city of Beaumont for twenty-three years now. I passed the.
Forgive me, sir. You have three minutes to, uh, to talk, and if you run out of time, let me know, and we'll be happy to accommodate you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I want to thank you all for allowing me to come before you. As I stated, I've been in the city of Beaumont for twenty-three years now. I am the pastor of the Board and Chapel Baptist Church, where we're located at thirty-four ninety-five Roland Road. In the north end of Beaumont, in the Helbig area in particular, that is one of the most underdeveloped areas in the city. And what we are proposing to do is to bring development to that area. Our first project is to put a fifty-unit, uh, apartment complex, and if you would see the picture of that where it says the Bell Estates, those are the type of apartments that we're gonna put there. It's gonna also, every apartment will be a three-bedroom, two-bathroom, living room, and dining room, um, apartment. You can see the site plan, where we have the retention pond that's at the back of the property, uh, and then the master plan, which shows how the land will be developed. We are planning to go into a phase two. Uh, in phase one, it calls for thirteen buildings. In phase two, it calls for four additional buildings, and then in phase three, we have not determined the approach that we're going to take. This will help eliminate much-needed housing here in the city of Beaumont. Now, this apartment complex is not going to be, uh, like others. Our goal is to help the residents that become residents in that facility to become financially literate, to teach them home ownership, and to help them to become first-time home buyers, where they can have, where we can increase the tax base here in the city of Beaumont.
Can you elaborate on that for a minute? You're going to build these and rent them to people, and then what?
We're going to put them in programs, encourage them to be a part of the program, so that they can receive financial literacy, um, first-time home ownership, and then teach them how to do their budgets. Because in the city of, or in the state of Texas, minorities in particular are ranked last in the country for financial literacy, and so we want to help eliminate that.
And the church would own these apartments?
No. Helbig Community Development Corporation owns the property and will own the facility. It's a five-on-one C-three nonprofit organization, separate from the church.
All right. Are the government funded?
No.
Have, have they money?
Well, the GLO is going to fund it, has funded it.
GLO?
Yes.
And what is GLO?
General Land Office. When Hurricane Harvey hit the area, um, we applied to bring much relief to this area, and they accepted us.
Pastor Reynolds, the individuals that opposed your development, did they give you a reason why?
No, I don't know why, and two of those individuals are members of my church. And, and, and I did not make it, uh, public as to what we're doing, because I've learned that sometimes silence is better. Get all your kinks out and then make presentations. And so I'm sure once they realize who is doing it, that opposition will be changed.
I think it's a great idea. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
And we don't have anybody that's going to speak for or against anymore, right?
I don't believe so. Adina, we didn't have any opposition. Okay, just the written opposition.
Okay, uh, we've heard from the staff, and also you're aware of the, the oppositions. There was two sets of oppositions. They appear to be from, uh, two different couples or families, and we also heard from the applicant, and, uh, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve twenty-four twenty-one Z.
Aye, seconded.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. Good luck, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Boone? Twenty-four twenty-two P.
Yes, sir. Twenty-four twenty-two P is to consider a request for an amended specific use permit to allow for the expansion of an alcohol and drug rehabilitation facility in an RMH residential multifamily dwelling highest-density district at nine fifty Washington. Uh, Shalom Healthcare Management has requested an amended specific use permit to allow the expansion of an alcohol and drug rehabilitation facility at this location. Um, more than half of the property is zone GCMD, and a specific use permit was approved to allow an eight-bed facility in one of the buildings located on the RMH property. Let's see. And again, before you, you can see the, outlined in red is the property. On the east side, you can see is, is, uh, is, is orange, and that indicates the RMH. Um, this type of facility is allowed by right in GCMD, um, but because part of it was in RMH, that's what required that specific use permit. So again, it was approved with an eight-bed facility. Uh, the amendment is proposed to be, uh, to allow for thirty-two beds, um, in the previously approved building, as well as an additional forty-two beds in the second structure. The facility will be treating both adult, male, and female patients. Patients will remain at the facility for fifteen to twenty days. The facility will have twenty-two beds available for detoxification and fifty-two beds available for residential post-detoxification treatment. In addition, the facility will offer outpatient programs for alcohol and drug abuse. Uh, security will be provided by an up-to-eight-foot fence around the entire facility, along with twenty-four-hour on-campus security guards. Security cameras will also be used. Patients will not be allowed outside of the buildings during treatment. For additional security to the neighbors, an eight-foot tall fence, and again, this is staff recommendation, for additional security, uh, an eight-foot tall fence should be maintained between the facility and any abutting residential properties. And let me go ahead and walk through the, um, the slides and photograph. Again, this is the old, uh, city health facility. You're aware we have a new facility on college. Uh, so this was sold a couple of years back. And this is an aerial view of the property in question, and again, the, the balance of the property is not shown because it is zone GCMD. Uh, this is the, uh, site plan overlaid on the property. And this is a view of the subject property. And really, it's going to be the building to the right of the screen, and also the subject property. A view to the northwest, to the west, to the east, to the north. And we did, um, send out thirty-six notices to surrounding property owners. We received zero in favor, but we have received one in opposition. Um, and that's from a, a J. Colin and Charles B. Crabbe at eleven oh five North Twenty-third Street. That's the owner's address. And they are opposed, saying this is a residential neighborhood that already has enough problems with alcohol and drugs, and more people with these backgrounds would be detrimental for the neighborhood already struggling with these issues. Drug rehab, no. Um, however, based on the application, uh, staff is recommending approval of the application, subject to the following conditions. Uh, number one, construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for the water and sanitary sewer services, including the requirement of the city's pre-treatment program. And then two, an eight-foot tall wood or masonry privacy fence be installed and maintained between the facility and the abutting residential properties. You may recall there was residential properties immediately to the north, so that's where this would be. And with that, are there any questions of staff?
Yeah, Chris.
Yes, sir.
What type of lighting will be installed?
Um, I believe the applicant is here. They may be able to elaborate on that, uh, but they just describe it as, as lighting. Let me see if I can find. Yeah, they just say security lighting, um, but they may have more information on that.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Boone?
Thank you.
Thank you. And applicants? Good afternoon, sir. If you would state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Dr. Jazalikwaja, and my address is ninety-four ninety-four Southwest Freeway, Houston, Texas, seven seven zero seven four.
Great, and, uh, we would love to hear from you with any additional information you might have.
Well, the, thank you very much for giving us this opportunity. I greatly appreciate the council's presence today. Uh, we had started this facility last year, and with certain COVID situation, we made some changes into it. However, we got the license from the state of Texas, and we got two hundred, uh, licensing capacity. Within the two hundred capacity over the last four months, our experience shows that the demand in this area, Jefferson, Harden, Orange, and Liberty is very high. A hundred fifty percent of the population require inpatient residential facility, and most of them, although there is addiction problem, is much higher among the men, but the women are voluntarily coming up for the medical treatment. So we see more women than men, sixty-two percent women. And they require a facility, therefore, we are proposing separate men and a women, uh, facility within that complex to provide them care and recover them from the addiction. As far as the question on the lightning, we have a security system. We put LED light. Currently, we have defense, uh, lightning, and we enhance more lightning so that it would be, uh, uh, camera systems can catch up if anything comes out. Apart from that, this facility also been used very aggressively during the hurricane Amelda. We had done a lot of community outreach and community outwork, providing a lot of support to the families during the crisis. And we have been partnered with the neighborhoods to help them out during that, uh, situation. I believe that the drug addiction is one of the major problem, and it has to be addressed, but because of the COVID, it is in the back burner, but problems still exist. The death mortality in Jefferson, Harden, and Orange is very high, and my personal data as a public health expert shows that these areas receive patients going to Brazoria and Galveston Counties, which are too far for them and difficult to afford it. Therefore, facility right here for men and women would facilitate the access to good quality care and support to the patients in Jefferson County, particularly Beaumont, which is a hub of that area.
Any questions for the gentleman? Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case?
I would just like to say that, um, Beaumont is fortunate to have a facility of its kind because there is no other facility in the entire city with beds and housing for drug addiction. So I would ask that you would probably consider approving. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments? Great. We close the public hearing now. We've heard from the staff and also the applicant, and, uh, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve twenty-four twenty-two P with the two conditions.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second with the two conditions. Any questions or comments or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Good luck, folks. Thank you. Mr. Boone? Twenty-four twenty-three.
Okay, twenty-four twenty-three ZP is the final item on the joint meeting today, and it's to consider a request for a rezoning of approximately six-point-seven acres from GCMD two, general commercial multifamily dwelling district, to LI light industrial district, and approximately thirty-point-five-eight acres from RS single-family dwelling to GCMD general commercial multifamily dwelling two, as well as a specific use permit to allow an art, outside lay-down yard and fleet maintenance facility at this location. Uh, Mallory Martin is requesting a rezoning and specific use permit to allow a lay-down yard at the northeast corner of East Tex Freeway and Chin Lane. Uh, Entergy Texas has purchased the property and would like to relocate their offices, fleet maintenance, and outside storage to this property. Out of the entire one-hundred-and-thirty-one-point-four-six-seven acre tract, approximately thirty-three acres are currently zoned LI, approximately six-point-seven-three acres are zoned GCMD, and the remaining approximately thirty-point-four-one acres is zoned RS. Entergy would like to rezone the six-point-seven-three acre portion to LI and the thirty-point-four-one portion to GCMD two. In addition, a lay-down yard requires a specific use permit in GCMD two. This will abut both additional LI and now GCMD zoning uh, to the existing RS zoning and residential properties along Lawrence Drive. Entergy proposes to limit damage to their residential neighbors by installing a large detention pond near the corner of Chin Lane and Lawrence Drive. In addition, a minimum, minimum of fifty-foot wide buffer is proposed along the line adjoining the residential properties. And let me, with it being split zone, it's, it's, it's a little confusing, so let me try to walk, uh, walk us through what's being proposed here. If you look, um, let's see, I don't think this has a pointer. Well, this has a laser pointer, but let, this is the, uh, if you look at the screen behind you, uh, you can see this gray area is LI light industrial. And what they're requesting is to rezone this piece of GCMD to LI. So basically, this would all be LI in this area. And then the idea would be to rezone this from RS to GCMD two. All with the idea of developing this for the new facility. And it's a little confusing, but I think the idea behind it was to offer as much protection as possible uh, for that single-family neighborhood, uh, to the rear. And so again, this is the undeveloped property, uh, in question. And this is the site plan, um, overlaid on the, uh, site. You can see the parking in front along the highway, uh, the buildings there. You can see the detention pond to the south. And then it's kind of hard to see on this, but there's a little line that runs parallel with Lawrence Drive, um, along that east side of the property, and that's the fifty-foot, uh, natural vegetative buffer that they're proposing. And this is the subject property, again, undeveloped. A view to the southeast along Lawrence. View to the east. Also, the east. And that's all we have. Um, we did mail out forty-one, uh, notices. We received zero in favor. We did receive, um, one in opposition. And that one in opposition is, I'll go back to the zoning map. Okay, I believe that property is, the LI property just north of the property in question here. Um, and that's owned by Starship Beaumont RV Resort out of Seabrook, Texas. And they're in opposition, saying the, um, this use does not conform to the quiet nature of the area and would be disruptive to the neighbors. So that's the reason for their opposition. But having said that, based on the application for rezoning, uh, as well as a specific use permit, staff is recommending, uh, approval of the application. Are there any questions of staff? If not, I believe Mallory Martin, uh, is in the audience, and also I believe Pam Williams with Entergy, uh, may not be with us, but she's available by phone if we, uh, if we need to, given the, uh, given the COVID protocols. Are there any questions of staff? Okay.
Good afternoon, ma'am. If you would state your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. I'm Mallory Martin with Kimley Horn, and I, our address for our office is eleven seven hundred Katy Freeway, suite eight hundred, Houston, Texas, seven seven oh seven nine.
Ms. Martin, do you have any additional information that you would like to give us?
Um, the only thing I wanted just to mention is that there will also be a seven-foot fence in addition to the natural buffer that will remain, and there would also be, currently is proposed to the south and north, um, property lines there is a thirty-foot buffer on site as well, and we'd be working with Tech Dot to get the driveway approved on the frontage road. Um, and obviously, the city would approve plans. Um, everything that we're proposing is allowed by right in light industrial, um, on lot one of the property. And then lot two, um, is what we're proposing for the specific use permit for additional lay-down yard and fleet maintenance building and warehouse, so.
And that fence should be eight feet, right?
Sorry?
If it's, if it's a required buffer, it should be eight foot. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, we can change that to eight feet.
Perfect. Any questions for the lady? Yes, go ahead, councilman.
Where is Entergy's current lay-down yard corporate office?
So there's currently multiple locations that are being consolidated. Um, so Chevy Land is the main catalyst for this being relocated, and because of Tech Dot acquiring, acquiring, acquiring right of way at that location, um, that's what's, uh, started the whole thing. Um, and then there's an Eleventh Street office. Um, I'm not exactly sure exactly where all of them are, but we could follow up if you need that.
Oh, that was in Big Hill. Okay.
So, so you would be moving out of the Eleventh Street office, and you said someplace where?
That's right. And then office staff as well from Edison Plaza, I believe, will be relocated there as well.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We've heard from the staff and the applicant, and this is the new facility for Entergy. I would entertain a motion.
I have a motion to approve with the conditions.
Great. We have a motion to approve with the condition. And we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. Madam Mayor, this concludes our cases.
We don't have one more?
We do. Should we have one more? We can make one up.
That's okay. Okay, thank y'all for coming. We're, we're a gentleman.
Good child, fearless leader, as always.
He's gonna be really surprised. I'm telling you. Best one.
Hey, Mary.
I'll do it. I'll do it. Oh, man.
That's if they make it up to us.
Hey, man.
Yes, sir. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Oh, you're happy. I mean, we're gonna get some rain, but nothing like what we thought. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Silent times. I'm saying.
Good evening.
I did too.
I tried to call him back, and he said, I gotta call you back. I text him, and he was gonna be like.
And he called me.
Well, he text me, but I was with a phone, and I mean, I couldn't.
Like, hey.
I'm calling you soon. Bye-bye, see you later.
So regardless, I guess going back, go back about a few years, in addition to based on three hundred feet, certain changes were somewhere just to allow additional layers. So basically, we required more of them. Thus, the one.
Cause then we wanna cancel.
You can decline, but if something we, if we get sued, the opposing attorney says, all right, you don't wanna vote this, which one's had since twenty sixteen? That's my answer.
Under the statute of law, specifically under the heading of zone. He said that, you know that? So we can only prove it then if there was been three hundred feet.
Baby, yeah. See, they got a baby, they got a baby up there.
So I'm going to, so the layer of comparison is beyond. We'll get sued if something.
Yeah.
We never have a baby.
Well, that, that, I don't want to hear, okay? That's obvious. But when I was in here last time, I was thinking, we got a lot of thin eyes. Because we have these other gaming players. And how do we turn him down if he's not, if he's complied? How do we say we used to hold?
Really, honestly, we need to prove. And, you know, we were thinking like last year. We recommended, we, out on Washington, way, you know. It was an industrial area, way, you know. We ran, we're not, it was a council that wants to see it. But the reality is, we need to prove somebody. Cause that way, when the jury asks me or tells us, which one did you? At least points, I'm gonna say one. The one before you now, you know, it does have a house right from here. Maybe that's, not that that, probably they got one that's supposed to be on today, but the application, next month. Well, it's just on Washington, near Gas Street.
I have a dysfunction.
Is that, is that an old gas station across from the health department?
Work is down.
It's got a house. Not, it's middle complete. Because the portion was asked about the site plan and children, the machine. You have a parking.
And you want us on the agenda.
Right.
But Scott, it's got an entry for plan laid out, but it's got the party.
It doesn't show, yeah, all this machines, but it has a part area that's designated for machines. And they could get, they do machines in there. So that's what they use to calculate this, for that one. But the one that was going to be on, did not comply with any site plan, any floor plan. He kept trying to tell us what, same guy. And he kept trying to tell me how I couldn't do site plan, and I didn't need, you know, I didn't need that. So.
But the issue of Ari is, and he recognized that he's beyond a three hundred feet of scope.
Yeah.
And we're using the residential property, but incompatibility issue, which, that's what I.
You're saying that's great.
Oh, it's, it's more clearer, bro.
Sure, then that's it. They use Kelly High School, which is like up round, down, around, and then as their reason for denying it.
He said, I don't think it's going, I don't think the council wants it. Okay? And so I get it, we think it's gonna pass, probably. But I, I feel like we're thin eyes.
Well, we don't have a legitimate, a legitimate reason to deny.
And that's my thing. I don't know, so it's, it's, there's some points, I'm like, we can't judge on it.
And I'm not sure he's not setting us up for that. Everyone that come, well, there's the Vietnamese group, cause they're, they have a lawyer out of Houston. Suits us, well, not suits us, but he questioned that. And so I suspect that's where the lawsuit's gonna come from.
It's a matter of time, so I guess that's the message. We need to approve something, so at least we can have an argument if we get sued. Say, look, we approved this one because it was less of a problem.
Maybe we'll get the two.
Perhaps the council, how do we communicate that to the council? Cause I don't know what's.
Well, we can't do it in executive session unless a claim is made. So you can only, and I've talked to the mayor about this, so she's aware of it.
Okay. And then how can the state signal us out from Harris County and, and, and prevent us from being more restrictive?
Well, they, they gave rights to the county without.